According to the Verizon time, it's 6:46, so good evening to everybody. Until we elect the Chair and Vice Chair. I said until we elect the Chair and Vice Chair. They're gonna call us in the closed session.
Slow down.
Keep an eye out, Marty.
I tell you what. That was a crazy move there. That's what he does during the day sometimes, too. I have a motion for the Board to consider to enter closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, subsection 3, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. That is the Technology Manufacturing Building. And subsection 8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specifically legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, and that is related to the resignation of the Montgomery County Treasurer. Do I hear a motion to enter into closed session?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor King. Motion by, second by Supervisor Shepherd. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Witzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Witzikowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We're in closed session. If we could, if we could, could I have a motion to come out of closed meeting, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Certification of closed meeting, which I have to get up. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where a section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion to accept, or do I have a, yes, do I have a motion to accept this certification?
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Supervisor King, second by Supervisor Biggs. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Witzikowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you very much. At this point in time, we'll move into the invocation and pledge of allegiance. We will stand and have a moment of silence, and then I'll lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I think I've already talked more tonight than I do in some board meetings, so this is our organizational meeting for 2019. That's why I'm leading us through the first couple of items on our agenda this evening. The next item on the agenda is for the election of Chair for 2019. This is a process that does not require seconds to a nomination. I'll be receiving nominations for Chair, and then we will go from there. So the floor is open for nominations for the position of Chair.
I'd like to nominate Todd King.
I have a motion to nominate Supervisor King. Do we have any other motions?
Move the nominations be closed.
Motion that the nominations be closed. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. At this point, we need to take a vote on the nomination of Supervisor Todd King as Chair for 2019. All those in favor of Supervisor King as Chair, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Supervisor King by a 7-0 vote. Congratulations, you are now the Chair. Chris, you don't have to leave.
Need to change stuff. Yeah.
I've got it all right here.
First and foremost, I would like to thank each one of y'all for voting for me and putting your confidence in me, and I will try my best. Yeah, give me that. Okay, we're gonna open up the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate April Demoss for Vice Chair.
Is there any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed.
Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Witzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Now that was to close the nominations, right? Thank you, I'm sorry.
Madam Secretary, would you please call for Vice Chair, please?
Okay. Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Witzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Now we're gonna move right along.
I guess I'll stay where I am. I guess I'll stay where I am.
Okay, you can help me. Okay, we're gonna move to organizational matters.
Be glad to, sir. The first item on organizational matters relates to the selection of meeting dates for 2019. I would point out, and we may need to have some discussion on this, I would point out that the way the regular meeting dates have been scheduled in the past is if a meeting was postponed for weather or whatnot, it was scheduled for the following week. This resolution states that if it's, should the Chairman declare that the weather or other conditions are such as hazardous for members to attend the regular meeting, the regular meeting shall be continued to the following business day. I think the county attorney may want to chime in on that as to why we can or can't do that. Marty, do you want to?
The code section specifically states the next Monday.
It's the following week.
Correct, following week.
So while we tried to reflect, I think what several folks wanted us to do in this resolution, we can't legally change it from the way it currently is. So what we would ask is that the resolution for selection of meeting dates for 2019 be approved with the understanding that in the second paragraph where it says, be it further resolved, that should the Chairman declare that the weather or other conditions are such that it is hazardous for members to attend the regular meeting, the regular meeting shall be continued to the following week. Is that right, Marty?
Yes.
So with that change, we would put that forward for a motion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we change the word Chairman to Chair so it's gender neutral?
Just Chair?
Yeah.
You should have caught that, I'm sorry.
It's someplace else, too, I got it.
Okay, thank you. With, so changing the timing and also changing the word Chairman to Chair, Mr. Chair, that would be the resolution that's put forward for your consideration?
Is there any discussion? Ready to vote? Madam Secretary, you call?
I need a motion.
I'll make that motion, or in a second.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Witzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is Rules of Order and Parliamentary Procedure. This is an item that the Board reviews and adopts each year as part of your organizational meeting. I do know that there was some discussions about changing one of the items. Did we note any changes, Vicki? I'm trying to remember now that I'm looking back.
Rule number 16.
There was a quick, what's in your packet for the resolution is the way it is currently structured, but I know that there may be some discussion on one or two of these, but Mr. Chair, you may want to get a motion in second so you can have discussion.
I'll move it for discussion.
I'll second it.
Now we have discussion.
Mr. Chair, I brought this up last year, about a month ago, maybe two. One, Robert's Rules of Order allows each one of us to go through for 10 minutes. I like that that's about 70 minutes worth of discussion, gives each Board member an opportunity, but I believe Roberts, I can't remember if it's Roberts' Rules of Order or there was a discussion about allowing an additional 10 minutes after everyone has had that opportunity for Board members to be able to speak on any individual subject that may be coming before the Board. I think that's a good organizational tool, to be able to make sure that every Board member is heard, and so that's one of the things I would ask to see if we could address and see if that could be accepted as a friendly amendment. And then the other item, I thought a lot about the three minutes versus the five that we have. Many localities surrounding us are at three minutes. Some cap the limit of how long public can address. We do not cap the limit, I've never seen that. Part of what I'm concerned about is making decisions after 11 o'clock at night, but also as Chair, I noticed that would be people that would be signed up, but towards the end, they would leave because they were so far down the list, or they didn't get the opportunity to be able to speak. And when you start having five minutes, each person, that seemed to, I'm wondering if that discouraged some of the speakers. I'm not weighted to go into three minutes. I would be considering a compromise at four and splitting the difference. I don't know what the other Board members are thinking, but that's kind of, some of the things that when we have speakers, sometimes they're saying almost the identical things over and over again, and that's fine, that's their right, but I think three minutes, you can say a lot of things in three minutes.
I want to speak in favor of keeping the five minutes. We started that in the year 2000, I believe, and the reason that we started that was because when people were coming forward to speak, one individual in particular would bring a stopwatch and wasn't sure about her time, but I also want to speak to it from the standpoint of being someone that before I ever got on this Board, I attended Board meetings and spoke, and I timed my three minutes. I went over it and over it and over it, but a lot of people that come to us, number one, they're not gonna maybe have the time to do that, and number two, I think we've all experienced when someone gets up there, sometimes they're nervous, sometimes they lose their place, and I think if you really looked at it, a lot of the three, a lot of it goes a little over three minutes. A lot of people don't take their full five, but I think it gives people the flexibility to feel like they can get up and speak and not feel that pressure, like I've gotta read it really fast to get everything in. So I'm in support of keeping the five minutes, I think it makes it more opening to folks. I think we do have meetings that last a long time, that happened regardless of, before when we even had the three minutes, and you know, our job as elected officials are to listen to our citizens, so I'm very much in favor of keeping the five.
More discussion?
It's my understanding that our school board has three minutes, is that what you understand?
Uh huh.
Do you know if they've had any issues with having it at three minutes?
Sometimes people don't finish saying what they're, they want to say.
Well, I, I'm in favor of the three-minute rule. I think in three minutes, most folks that get up to speak, they're either speaking in favor of or against, and in three minutes, they have enough time to say that whichever choice they want to go and their reasoning for it, and I think that's really the purpose of that. It's not to belabor the issue or to get onto other topics, but to let us know so we know where they stand, and I think three minutes will do that. And I also like Supervisor Tuck's idea of a second go-around, 10-minute go-around for us to ask further questions if we have more questions of a speaker, so I'm in favor of that. I think it does, I think three minutes, it sounds like it's a short period of time, but as you all know that have been in front of that lectern, including myself, three minutes
What ended up working for the pipeline people towards the end of last year is they actually asked us if they could present to us facts, and we gave them 10 minutes, and I found that that was exceptionally helpful, because maybe it's rare, but sometimes there are excellent groups that have a lot of great information to share with us, even though they might not be formal groups. So I think about allowing, I don't know how we would allow certain groups to be able to present to us for 10 minutes, but I would suggest that we, if we're going to reduce the time down to three minutes, then some groups, I know for the two groups that had a lot of participation in my district, one was Clay Street Development and one was the Pipeline, you know, in both instances, all the people, not all the people, but quite a bit of people would say, this is just not enough time to talk, and I understand, a lot might be repetitive, but I believe it's important for us to hear our constituents. And it wasn't all repetitive, and a lot, you know, people bring themselves to this Board for us to listen to their particular situation. So I'd be curious, is there any, I don't know how that actually was allowed last year, that 10-minute, I know I asked and we said yes, but...
Under Rule 17, we're allowed to make 15-minute presentations, so if a group that you recognize, like, you know, preserved in the RRB, came and that's what was done in those 15-minute presentations. Now typically, once, if there were questions, that presentation would go longer because they presented for 15 minutes, but let's say you had five minutes worth of questions, so that's how that was done under those different presentations. So that's under, that was what we adopted last year.
So is that, could that have been used for, you know, Woods Edge Homeowners Association group saying, hey, we'd like 15 minutes to come, talk to the Board?
If they would have asked, that was been something I would have been considering also for me, and everybody's different, and as I said earlier on, that doesn't mean wrong. I waited for a Board member to say, I have this group that wants to make a presentation, but at the same time, there were groups that asked Vicki and approached Vicki about saying, I'd like to make a presentation, and we worked on those things. If it was something I believed that the Board wanted to hear from, then we put it on there.
Okay.
Now, Rule 17 also says to get prior approval from the Administrator, so is that, is that a difficult thing for organizations to do?
Easily contact Vicki and let us know, and you can...
And it looks to me like that's put in there so that you don't have these impromptu gatherings out in the lobby, and they say, well, let's go back in there and do a presentation. And I think they're better suited to have something to work on and present to us, and I really like that idea. I wish we had, were able to do that last year, because there would have been back and forth, we could have asked them questions that we all walked away not knowing how the other one, each side felt, so I'm in favor of that, but it sounds like it's already covered in our rules.
The second thing that Supervisor Tuck brought up about the Roberts Rules, Marty, is that in Roberts Rules, 10 minutes, and then go around and 10 minutes more, or how does that work in Roberts Rules?
Right, yeah. The way Roberts Rules reads is on any motion, each member can speak for up to 10 minutes, and then you can have a second go-around for additional 10 minutes, so long as everyone's had a first opportunity to speak, is what it states.
So is it Rule 1, it's already covered in Rule 1?
But we never had enforced it, and that's why I wanted to bring it to folks' attention. I did not enforce that last year at all.
I believe Supervisor Bone, yes, you wouldn't need to add the 10 minutes as a rule because it's already in Roberts Rules of Order. As Supervisor Tuck said, that's just not been something in previous Board meetings that's been enforced, so if it's in there, it can be enforceable and doesn't need to be added.
Okay.
And also, public hearings are most likely different than a motion, too, if you think about it. With a public hearing, there isn't a motion before the Board. Roberts Rules talks about motion, so let's say there's a motion to approve this ordinance or something, then each member would have 10 minutes plus an additional 10. But on public hearing, I'm not sure that would be applicable.
So when...
So you may want to consider a rule for public hearing, if you want.
When the gate station was being discussed, that was an emotion?
No, well, if...
Right? They were just presenting.
There were two different discussions. The first one, the public hearing item, was a public hearing, not a motion. The second one, then, there was a motion to, I think, approve the ordinance, and then there was a discussion on that. So Roberts Rules would apply to that, that 10-minute rule, but not necessarily to a public hearing.
Gotcha. Are you asking for anything special to be put into these rules, or are you just saying, Roberts Rules is good enough, let's just pay attention to it this time?
I felt like that, and I can always tell you from where I fell as Chair, I did not believe that if we hadn't done it, even though we had adopted Roberts Rules of Order, for me to impose it during the middle of the year would not be appropriate. And so I did not do that, but I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. I think we, as far as motions, yes. I also wouldn't mind allowing Board members to reserve time, or, you know, you see it in the Senate hearings where they reserve time. Let's say it's an issue that's not affecting my district at all, but I want to give that time to either Steve or April because it is, you know, I'd like some flexibility where I wouldn't want to talk about it, but at least we would know this is, we're going to be talking about this for an hour and 40 minutes roughly, as long as we're going to talk about it, so there's a definitive time that we know we're going to be done as far as our discussions.
And another, and just to tag on what you're saying, you could have two members that may be interested in an item, the one member may want to do the speaking on that item, and the other member could reserve or give their time to that member.
And that's part of Roberts Rules?
No, that's a rule.
That's something I was going to ask if we could consider, because there might be an issue that's in your district that I want to make sure you have, feel like you've got enough time, and out of that hour and 40 minutes, maybe I can give you an extra 10 minutes of my time, because I'm only going to use two minutes of it, so I'm going to give you the rest of the eight. I may have two questions. Now, the other question I have, and I'm looking to staff, is how much does that put pressure on you guys to kind of be a timekeeper? I used to play chess by clock at one point in time in my life, but if...
It shouldn't be overly burdensome, I just don't want, if we run into that instance a lot, what I would do is keep a general eye on the time and then let the Chair know, you know.
Okay.
I don't want to be the one to call y'all.
And that's the Chair's job, right.
I personally think that if we leave Rule Number 1 the way that it is, understanding the sequence of how it's supposed to work, I think that's a good step this year. I mean, gosh forbid, if we think that we need to give some of our time to somebody else. I mean, we worked in a pretty flexible manner last year, that might work, too. I don't think we have to create a rule to allow us to do that.
Well, if you moved it to 10 minutes and 10 minutes, you'd have 20. If you had 20, Chris could give you eight of his, 28 minutes.
I think my 40 minutes of questions last year, I learned my lesson, so...
Need more discussion?
I agree with Steve about the three minutes. I think if you get up there to speak, you're either for something or against, and I did want to make one point, not that I'm advocating this at all, there are counties that don't have any public address.
Wow.
In this state.
Well, Supervisor Tuck mentioned that he might be willing to compromise at four if it...
If I'm willing to compromise, and so if four would get us seven votes, I'm willing to compromise at four.
So you were proposing that as a friendly amendment?
I was proposing it as a friendly amendment, and we're in discussion. So I'm willing to compromise. I'm not saying that three is the magic number. You had said a lot of times you need a little bit more time, Mary, that would still, we would still be a minute more than any other locality that I know of around us, and we don't have a cap. I know the school board has a cap on how much time they typically vote to go past that, but they've got a cap, and other localities do as well.
Mr. Chair, you might want to see if Supervisor Biggs and Supervisor Bone are willing to accept a friendly amendment.
I'm looking at it.
I don't feel comfortable with it, actually.
I don't either.
You know, maybe in 2021, it just seems like the few issues that came before the Board last year, people were really asking for the whole five minutes and felt that it was short. I just don't feel comfortable. I won't be upset if four minutes passes, but I don't feel comfortable.
I don't either. I mean, I've, you know, I've experienced it over the, I guess, long haul, and I think it's a way to include more people and make them feel more comfortable when they get up to speak. I mean, you think about getting up there to speak, it's nerve-wracking for some people. Other people, it's natural, you know? So I'm willing to give the flexibility of the five. I feel strongly about it, and that's what I'm going to support.
Need more discussion?
I just, like I said, from my experience, think of how many people who signed up who at the end of it weren't speaking because they didn't have enough, because the hour had gotten too late, there'd been too many speakers prior to that that had gone on, and if they, if we would have limited it to three, that would have allowed maybe some of those speakers to be able to speak and their voices to be heard.
I have something I'd like to add to that. To be real honest with you all, I think a lot of times the way our agenda is, by the time we get to public address, that's part of the issue, too, and people have to go home, or they have kids, or whatever, and I think when you have a really controversial issue, that that seems to be when it takes longer and you might see some people leaving. But the way we have our agenda, a lot of times we're doing presentations, we're doing everything else, and, you know, you look down at the watch, and we have... else, and, you know, you look down at the watch, and we haven't had public address, and it's like nine o'clock or something. So I think there's more than one factor that goes into people leaving early.
As well as, I believe that most of the people who do end up leaving haven't done a public address before. They don't know that they should sign up as soon as possible. I think that that's probably a lot of the case. So they end up being at the end of the list, and they can't stay the whole time.
Well, I was reminded one time when I come in front of this board, not this board, but a few years back, when they was getting ready to raise taxes. I was talking to my little piece there. A gentleman said, "Your time's up. Your three minutes is up." I said, "I'm going to live in this county more than three minutes, so I've got a lot more to say." And they cut me off. So that's where I'm kind of on the edge yet. I like people to say what they want to say, and I know it gets emotional in here, especially like the pipeline and all the, it does get emotional. But I do appreciate Supervisor Tuck bringing that to our attention. I really do. Any more discussion?
You had a suggestion for a friendly amendment that wasn't agreed to, so you need to vote on the original motion.
Okay, we're going to vote on the original motion.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Krasnicki?
No.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
No.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Five, nine, two, no.
Mr. Chair, the next item under organizational matters is...
Mr. Chair, may I interrupt for just a second? I just want to advise the board, I misspoke a little bit on the regular meeting dates. If there is severe weather, I checked it. So if the board wants to reconsider the motion, you do have flexibility in setting whatever day or days after the event or after the business. So if you want to do it the following business day, or keep the one week, it's up to you. Or you can put something in between. So if the board wants to reconsider that, just reconsider a motion to change that date.
I'd like to just give a little opinion on that. I'd be interested in reconsidering that motion and just from my own personal recent experience, in December, when our meeting was postponed on the 10th to the 17th, and I had already made plans to attend a ceremony at Arlington National Cemetery on the 17th. So if we would have been able to defer it just a day, two, three days instead of a whole week, it would have meant that I wouldn't have had to miss our last meeting last year. So I like the idea of reconsidering.
Can we just reconsider that one rule?
You have that portion of it, yeah.
Well, that would be the item A under organizational matters, just a selection of meeting dates, right, Marty?
Yeah, and it would revert back to the way it was written.
The following business day.
Yep, in your board packet, which says, "The regular meeting shall be continued to the following business day."
I'd go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
That was Supervisor Tuck and Supervisor Biggs.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, you call roll.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Krasnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bell? Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you, Marty.
Sorry about that. Mr. Chair, the next item under organizational matters is the Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct. This is a document that the board reviews and adopts each year related to your performance of duties and standards of conduct as board members on the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors. And I think I've said this in the past, but as your county administrator, it means a lot that the board feels strongly enough about these items to codify them and make them part of your annual organizational meeting.
Any discussion?
I'd like to move it, but on Number 18, I just lost it off of here by having it to myself to make Chairman Chair, so it's gender neutral. I think it's Number 18.
It is. It says, "Board members will follow the procedure of communicating directly with the county administrator," and says Chairman, actually Chairman's in that paragraph twice, but we've changed Chairman to Chair. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, including that.
A second, right?
Yeah.
Is that a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Ms. Krasnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bell? Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven.
Moving down to Presentation, Recognizations, and Awards, Comprehensive to Annual Financial Report. Mr. Chair, we're very pleased to have John Aldridge with us this evening. John, good to see you this evening.
Nice to see you, as always. And thank you all for having me tonight. I'm John Aldridge. I've met most of you before, Brian Edwards of Run-up Virginia. You should have, I guess, stacked goodies in front of you, the actual financial report. It's going to be a bound document. I'm going to keep this real high level because I know you have a lot of things to do. As you know, you have to have an audit every year, and what happens, that audit then is presented by me. And the way it works, it's supposed to be done before the end of the calendar year, okay? But given the weather event and the meeting, I guess it was December 10th, was canceled, the state granted you the ability for me to come in January and do that. So we're still complying with all the laws and rules and regulations with me being here today, even though it is after December 31st. But as part of our audit every year, we not only do the county, include it is also the schools, the EDA, and the public service authorities. They're all part of our audit. And just want to point out a few things in the actual financial report. On page one, if you could actually go over about six or seven pages, but it is page number one, where it's got Brian Edwards' logo at the top, and it says Independent Auditor's Report, there's a section at the bottom where it says Opinions. The first line says, "In her opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." Now, what this simply means is you all received an unmodified or a clean opinion. That's the highest level of assurance we will put on a financial report, so you once again had a clean opinion. All right? And then if you flipped over a couple pages, to page number five, we have the Statement of Net Position. And I just want to briefly talk about one thing that's new this year. If you look on that particular page five and look down in the liability section, towards the bottom of the liability section, there's a line there that says Net Other Post-Employment Benefit Liability. And for the county, that number is $3.4 million, $274,000 for the public service authority, and then just a hair under, $19 million for the school board. That is a new liability that's never been on the books before, okay? It's always been talked about, it's been disclosed, but what that really relates to is health insurance and the ability that an employee can retire and stay on health insurance until 65, okay? So they can stay on it. The thought is, they're earning that benefit while they're still here in the building. So we need to recognize that liability. And people say, "Well, what if they pay 100% of the cost?" There's an idea of this thing called an implicit subsidy, meaning since they're part of the group, they're going to get it at a discounted rate. So there is a value there to cost. And so that is booked for the first time ever this year. Again, it's been disclosed. What it matters to you is simply, you're going to do it the same way you always have, you kind of pay it as you go, but it's just a liability that goes on the books that, you know, all the people, the bonding agencies, the rating agencies, all those people, they've known what this number is, they've just never booked it before. So that's really the only new thing in the report this year. I did want to point out a couple of other things that I thought were helpful. If you just go over two pages to page number seven, I always find this helpful to look at. On page number seven, the first column, you have the General Fund of the county. And when you think General Fund, that's just your regular operating fund of the county. And you have your assets, your liabilities, this little thing called deferred inflows. And then you go down to the bottom, and you have Fund Balance, okay? There are five categories of Fund Balance. The one I just want to briefly mention to you all is the last one, Unassigned. And you will see there that the county ended the year with unassigned Fund Balance of $25.5 million, okay? When it says unassigned, that means it's not bond money that has to be spent for a particular project, it's not grant money that's restricted for a certain thing, that is money that you, as a board, can decide what you want to do with. So that number is $25 million. So what I like to do is say, "All right, how many months of Fund Balance do we have?" Meaning, if you flip the page over to page number nine, two pages, you will see there on Exhibit Four, that the total expenditures in that first column are $114 million. So if you were to take that $114 million and divide it by 12, you would come up with a monthly expenditure. And so you take that monthly expenditure and then compare it to your unassigned Fund Balance, and if you did the math, you would come up with a number of 2.67 months sitting there, okay? This is the type of information bond companies look at. Your number is 2.67 months. Last year, the number was 2.24 months, so there's been an improvement over the last year. And what I like to do a lot of times, because people ask me, "What's the right number or what's the magical number?" And really, there is no magical number. It's what's right for you and your locality. And again, this is public information, you could have done the same thing. So I said, "Well, how do y'all compare to Run-up County?" If I ran the same calculation for Run-up County, their number would come back at 1.5 months. So, okay, you're 2.67, Run-up County's at 1.5. And so what about more of, I guess, a rural locality, like a Pulaski, okay? Pulaski's number's going to be 3.1 now, okay? It's going to be a little bit more. Then I said, "All right, let's finally, let's look at another college town, okay? Or a college area where you've got a college within the county." And that would be Albemarle County. And if you did this exercise for Albemarle County, it would be 2.6 months. So, I mean, you're right there with what Albemarle's showing and with a like-sized locality. And I think that's a good example for you all. So the reason I tell you all that, you're consistent, you're in line with other Virginia localities, and like I said, you're right there with Albemarle, who has the University of Virginia there as well. And so a lot of similarities between the two. Okay? All right. The, flipping through the notes, if you went over to page 57, this is some exciting reading. On page 57, it starts talking about this whole other post-employment benefit, the new thing. It goes from page 57 to page 82. So if you really want to get exposed to this, read those pages, a lot of detail in there talks all about it, all right? And again, just trying to keep this concise, why don't you look also on page 111 while we're looking through this report? I mentioned to you all, the schools are included in this audit. And I like to point this out, on page 111, you can look at the School Operating Fund, and Intergovernmental in the revenue section at the top, $105 million. I just want to point out, out of that $105 million, 45 of that is coming from the county. So that's what you all are helping the schools out. So out of that 105, 45 million comes from the county. And in addition to that, which is unique in the state of Virginia and the Commonwealth, you're also paying the debt service for them, okay? Because schools can't issue debt in the state. So in addition to that 45 million, there's also on your set of books, 17 million in debt service you're paying on their behalf. So it's the 45 million plus the 17 million, if you want to look at the total picture there of what we're paying to the schools throughout the year. All right. And then two other things, briefly. If you go to page 114, we have to look at all the federal money that comes through the county, whether it be through social services, whether it be related to the schools, and then you have to test a certain percentage of that. And if you start on page 114 and go to the next page, you will see that Montgomery County had $10.7 million of federal money that was spent this past year. I'm pleased to tell you, we have to test approximately 40% of that money. And in testing that, we had no findings at all this year. So again, you can look in the back of the report to see the actual programs we looked at, but the staff that related to those programs are to be commended, that during our tests, we found there matters of noncompliance that have to be brought to you all as well as the federal government. And so, again, the rest of that report, a lot of good statistical information starts on 116. I would encourage you to look at that, a lot of historical items for the last 10 years. But again, the big takeaways for you all, in my opinion, or if you look at the Fund Balance, it improved from last year. You're very comparable with other localities, like size. And quite frankly, you know, when you look at that, the Government Finance Officers Association would tell you the magical number is five months. Very rarely do you see that. 2.6, if you've got a diverse tax base, you've got a lot of different businesses paying for you or paying in taxes, that number can be a little bit lower. If you're a small locality that has three or four major factories, they're paying all the taxes, that needs to be a higher number, in case the factory went out of business, they laid off, they're not generating revenue, you would need to have better reserves than you do. But again, in your case, it looks reasonable and, again, comparable to others. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Any supervisor have questions?
I have one. In talking about the schools and the debt service being included, you said that we were unique in the Commonwealth and that we are paying... Can you go back to that?
The way it works, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, school boards can't go out and issue bonds on their own, okay? What happens if you want, and you know that firsthand, let's say Shawsville Elementary or some school here, Eastern Montgomery, okay? They want to build another new high school or new football field, okay? Let's say that's $10 million. They can't go out on their own and get $10 million in bonds. They would have to come to you, and the county would go out and get the bonds, okay? Then what happens? The debt would sit on your books. And the reason being is, you have taxing authority, they do not. So again, that's unique. A lot of localities or a lot of states, the school boards are able to tax. And so if they can tax, then they can issue the debt as well. And so what happens then, since you have the taxing authority, it's coming out of general revenues, the debt sits on your books, not the school board's books.
Thank you.
That'll...
That was it, that was my own question.
Just to clarify, the 17 million, where is it on any of these...
If you were to go to page number nine, in the report on page number nine, you can see down there in the debt service section, where you've got 15 million of principal retirement, $7 million of interest, the bulk of that's school-related. So you can see there, the 15 million and 7 million, it's kind of a little below halfway in a little page. You can look out to the right where it says debt service. If you wanted to see a little more detail of that, actually look on page... Let me grab it here. Go all the way to page number... Page number 30. Page number 30, note number nine, has the detail of all the debt. It's going to be in that section there, Governmental Activities. And so, for example, if you looked on the first line there, Governmental Activities, general obligation bonds at the end of the year were $38.6 million. Well, if you take that, put your finger there and flip over two pages to page number 32, at the top of page number 32, you see that $38.6 million. And if you look at that, every one of those is school-related. So out of that 38 million, that's all school-related, school construction bonds, public school authority bonds, and again, several other school construction bonds. So the 17 million is part of that 15 and 7 on page number nine.
You lost me on page 30. Where did I see the 38.6 on that page?
You're going to see it very precisely on the very first line on page 30.
Oh, I see ending balance. Okay, I got you. Oh, I see ending balance, okay, I gotcha. And then, speaking to Supervisor Demont's question, it's not unique to our county, it's unique to the Commonwealth of Virginia. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Were there any concerns?
No. No, you know, there was one matter related, the state makes us test certain, I guess they would call compliance matters, the auditor of public accounts. And really, the only one we noted, there was one related to social services on an annual certification review, and it's noted on the very last page or next to last page, 140 in the report, was just an instance where the individual did not have the annual certification they needed. Again, it's fairly minor fix. The other thing that you all have had for several years that is still there is just kind of segregation of duties matter. You just don't have enough people to devote all the tasks. And so as a result, there's a few conflicting duties in the finance department. So again, it's one of those that's been here for a while, and it's a risk that you all assume, saying, we don't want to go out and hire three people to make this go away, we just have some compensating controls to get comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Questions?
I have no questions, appreciate you coming.
Yeah, thank y'all for having me tonight.
Thank you, John. Next presentation will be the ACE program up here.
Mr. Chair, I believe Angie Covey's here with us tonight. Looks like you're bringing security with you, too.
Not a couple students with us, too, so... Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity to give you an update on what's been happening this past semester. Originally, when we talked about the program, we anticipated that the first-year cost would be around $300,000, second-year cost being $600,000. And Supervisor Tuck will remember some phone calls where I got a little nervous because the numbers started getting a little high in the beginning. The total number that we anticipate the cost to be for the first year is $360,000. So we're only $60,000 over what we had anticipated, and we've already raised $65,000 in funding to support the difference. So we're in great shape for year number one. We had 140 students participating in the ACE program. And as you all know, they each committed, were responsible for giving 80 hours of community service back to the community, which they've done, and that's been very successful. Chief Wilson can give you some details about that. And basically, do you have any specific questions that you want to ask about the program? And then I want to give our two students an opportunity to say a few things about the program as well.
Do you have any questions?
I'll let Chief Wilson say a few things, and you can introduce the students.
Yeah, good evening. Once again, I just want to start with telling you guys just how proud I am of this program and what a great decision it was by this board, a courageous decision to do something like this. I figured it out the other day, that I've been doing community work for this county or for this country for greater years than I have. And, but I tell you that there's been nothing more inspiring than getting a chance to work with these young people and introducing them to some of the great things that are going on in Montgomery County. I think we figured up at $9 an hour, we were roughly $100,000 worth of labor we returned to the county. But that pales in comparison to what these kids are learning and the folks they're being exposed to, is some of the great volunteers that are in this county. Gladly, like I said, we're hoping to expand our horizons in community service this year. We're looking at doubling the amount of kids involved, so we hope to be seeing them out on our rec fields, helping those guys, our public works departments for the county and the towns, hopefully on our forest service, out on the trails, doing trail maintenance and lots of other things that make this such a great county to work in. So I'll introduce our students here. We have Matt Sharp, he's gonna be talking to you from Blacksburg.
Hi, like I said, my name's Matt Sharp, I'm a freshman at U River, and I did the ACE program because I thought it was a great financial and academic opportunity. As far as the service aspect of it, I chose to volunteer with the Blacksburg Fire Department, and it was a great decision. I like it a lot there, and without the ACE program, I'm not sure I would have done it. So I'm glad I did, that's all.
This is Zach Levens, he's from Christiansburg.
Like I said, I'm Zach Levens, hailing from Christiansburg, and I'm enrolled as a pre-nursing student through the ACE program. I got my hours by volunteering at the dementia ward at the nursing home I work at. I just wanted to express my gratitude and appreciation to the Board of Nurses and NRCC for the opportunity this program has afforded me. I plan on entering the nursing program this fall and graduating as a registered nurse in hopefully two years. NRCC nursing has a 94% success rate passing the NCLEX to become a registered nurse. From there, I would like to transfer to a four-year university for my bachelor's. The cost of an education can be expenses and at times seem out of reach. This debt-free education in exchange for a community service is a no-brainer. This program will greatly help offset future college costs, allowing me to afford a bachelor's while giving me the opportunity to grow and mature in my civic responsibilities and character. Again, thank you and everyone for the support of this program.
Well, like I said, those are some of our students, and I think, like I said, we could bring about another 138 up here, and they'd tell you different stories but the same results. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
I just wanted to say, thank you, Anthony, Chief Wilson, and you, Angie, for what you've done. I'm terribly proud of that, this program, too. Good job.
Great to see you, Matt. Congratulations. What are you studying?
I'm in general studies right now, so I'm kind of testing waters, trying to decide what I want to do. I gave you, and so I guess physical therapy is something I'm interested in right now, but I could change. A lot of people say people change their majors a lot of times, so I'm trying to figure out what I do.
So how many times have you had lunch with your mom?
Well, she's at Radford now.
Oh, okay. Alright, you're excused. That's all I got.
I just wanted to say that I think the publicity for this program is really spreading through Montgomery County, because I have a lot of people stop and ask me about it, and a lot of my former students that are now up in high school are excited about it, so...
I would like to add, we have two events coming up. We're gonna be doing an event with Virginia Tech Athletics. I'll be sending all of you an invitation, that's gonna be on February 28. That's gonna be a fundraiser like we did last year. And then in addition to that, we have a 5K race planned for early April, and we've been working with, we have a great team, representatives from the Dialogue on Race, Blacksburg High School, so you'll be getting more information about that, too.
And you can walk in the race also.
Yes, you can walk.
Supervisor Tuck?
Well, a couple of things. Anthony, you volunteering your time to make this program work is a tremendous asset. And I know, because I've got some of those emails, it hadn't always been smooth sailing, but you've smoothed it all out, and I'm greatly appreciative of that. And, you know, this was a close vote, and I will say that Supervisor Shepherd is one of the ones who convinced me that this is a vote I needed to make, and I'm very happy that I made that vote. Thank y'all for making it, and I appreciate you two young fellows coming in and sharing your story. Thank you.
Two questions. First, Anthony, are you gonna keep volunteering? I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Yeah, see what 300 kids are like.
I'm still waiting for you to give me the call, go down to Eastmont, I'm ready. So if you let me know. And Angie, how are we comparing with some of the other counties that are involved with ACE as far as percentages raised, as far as the donations, the monies that were not coming directly from us?
Giles County, I have to say, has really taken the lead. Of course, we're four years in. One of the things that has really made it work so well in Giles County is the county owns the program, it's really not a New River program. After about the second year in Giles County, at that point, I've not fundraised any longer in Giles. It just happens in the community because you can't go to Giles, and people don't know what ACE stands for. So they're in the lead. Of course, Floyd County is tobacco commission dollars, so that's not an issue. However, interestingly enough, Floyd County being tobacco commission funds is providing 100%. We've still received over $100,000 in donations just to support the program if that tobacco dollars would run out. And then Radford is so small in comparison to Montgomery County, it's kind of apples to oranges there. But I'm really pleased with what we've been able to do in that short period of time. You know, as I had shared, our first estimate was $300,000 first year, $600,000 second year, so of course that means that our request that we'll be bringing to you will double what we requested last year, which was the 250. We've also reached out to the two towns in asking them if they'll increase their contribution of 25 each last year to 50 to continue to support the program.
Boxer Demont?
Well, you guys came and said a lot of thank yous to us, but thank you to all of you, including the two students that are here, for bringing this program to us, for allowing us to be a part of it and for participating in the program. I really believe, and I forgot your name, but what you said, access to this two-year education will give you access to two additional years on the other end that you may not have had. And I think that that's a really important thing, not that everybody has to go on to continue their education, but any further education and any access to that is so important for developing skills and getting into the workforce and having happy lives and families. So thank you very much for allowing us to participate in this.
I have no questions, just want to tell you, I appreciate both of you, all the hard work. Thank y'all for coming out.
Thank you. Chair Keen?
Yes, sir. There was one thing that I meant to bring up when we were talking about organization, and it's, I was just looking at my notes and I realized I had missed it. And that was the length of your term, and we did not resolve that, unless that resolution addresses it, it was to run to December the 31st. And so I think that needs to be changed until the first meeting, and talking with Marty, because if something would have came up where something needed to be signed, there was no chair from January 1 until just a few months ago. And so I don't recall who made the motion, but I would ask if we, and perhaps to readdress that issue, to extend it until the first meeting. I know that there's some reasons why, let's say that you were up for reelection and you didn't win, well then your term would end on December 31st. But you would have a vice chair, so both of you would have to not win your elections. But at the same time, I just think it's important for the county to have a leader at all times, and so I guess I would ask to extend it.
And it should be probably chair and vice chair.
And, yes, and that's my intent, is chair and vice chair, so that if the chair couldn't serve, we would have the vice chair. But it shouldn't end on December 31st, in my opinion. Now, I don't know if the chair would allow me to reopen that or not.
Yeah, I think, you want a motion on that?
I would make that motion, that your term run, both of your terms, run until the first meeting in January 2020.
Yeah, until a successor is elected.
And where a successor is elected.
And by code, you're required to elect your leadership at the first meeting.
I'll say it.
I have a motion in second. Any more discussion?
I just have a question, so, and we can legally do that, right? Our board can legally do that?
Yeah, you can do that. Now, one, like Board Member Tuck said, is in a situation where a board member was no longer a member, then we would be back without a chair, but then the vice chair would sit.
And if they're both out, then they're just both out.
Yeah.
So they can't serve you out on the 31st if they're no longer a member.
Yes.
Is any more discussion? Madam Secretary, you call Rose?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Cuzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Demont?
Aye.
Ms. Bees?
Aye.
Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Keen?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Thank you, that adds clarification, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. This is something that we do each year, as the citizens are well aware, we are now working on the fiscal year 2020 budget, which just boggles my mind to even say it. But we have a public hearing at the first meeting of January each year to seek any comments from the public on the process or things that they'd like to see in the fiscal year 2020 budget. This is not the public hearing for the proposed budget, because the budget hasn't been proposed yet. It'll be proposed in March, and the public hearing for that proposed budget will be the first meeting in April. So it will be ample opportunities for the public to speak regarding the 2020 proposed budget. But this is just an opportunity this evening, if should anyone want to be here to make any comments about the upcoming year's budget, they're welcome to do so.
Seeing no one signed up, if anybody here would like to come forward and speak about this, you have five minutes. Seeing none, we'll... Here we go, come on up here. About to gabble this.
Hi, I'm Sherri Levens, and my son Zachary, you guys just met and spoke with, and I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you for supporting the ACE program. Obviously, as a parent looking at free tuition, that is a great opportunity, and the volunteer aspect of it, of being able to serve within the community, and the opportunity for students to expand on interests. They may not have a, they're going to general studies, they may not have decided exactly what they want to do, but it gives them an opportunity to experience and to serve and give back to their community. So I just wanted to thank you guys for the ACE program, your support and investment on it, and I would encourage you to continue to support and find ways to invest in our youth. This is just a win-win situation. When it first came about a year or so ago, when they're interested in Montgomery County for this, and I know Giles County had already had implemented, I was completely for it. Of course, I'm thinking as a mom, free, free. We are a Dave Ramsey-type of family where debt is dumb, and we know the value of a dollar. And so this is, we're service-oriented people anyway, and it's just a win-win situation. Zachary's had opportunity, not only through the rescue squad, volunteering and meeting people, but also through his work, and that can go along with his career and other organizations that he went with the lung transplant, what was it, a fundraiser that he did as well. So he's getting out and meeting the community and also developing, so I would encourage you guys to continue to support that. It's an investment, and it's a win-win. One other thing to think about, the gentleman, the young student was talking about his opportunity to volunteer at the fire, Blacksburg Fire. Mr. Tuck had shared at a meeting that those services are free, and if you think about, if we lost those volunteers, could we afford that as a county? And that is something we really need to invest and thank our volunteers, especially our first responders, rescue and fire, that this is something we need to encourage people to continue to support, to volunteer and find an interest in that. And I just wanted to thank you guys for the support for the ACE program. And Ms. Covey and Chief Wilson have done an excellent job, and I hope that we have more regular students that want to take advantage of this. As a parent, we love it. And so it's just a win-win situation. So thank you guys for your support.
Seeing nobody else, let's close this. Move right along to public address. No one signed up, but you more happen to come up, state your name, you have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close the public address. Addendum.
No addendum this evening?
We have no addendum. Consent agenda.
So moved to adopt it.
Second.
I have a motion in second. I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fisukowski?
Aye.
Chair Keen?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Thank you. End of work session. Have a motion, sumut, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 End of work session.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'm going to recognize Mark McGruder, right? Are you the presenter tonight?
Yep.
All right. Mark's going to share some news about revenue estimates for fiscal year 2020.
Thank you. Let me give you an update on our preliminary revenue projections going into the fiscal year 20 budget.
Thank you so much.
I like to start off each year and talk a little bit about our categories of revenue. County revenue falls into two separate categories, undesignated revenue and designated revenue. The difference is whether or not those revenues are restricted or not. Your undesignated revenues are unrestricted revenues, which means that they can be used for just about any purpose. Designated revenues, on the other hand, are restricted revenues, meaning that they are earmarked for a specific purpose and can only be used for that purpose. Now, tonight's presentation is going to focus on undesignated revenue. That makes up the bulk of the county revenue. It's roughly 89 percent. And just to kind of put that into perspective, for the fiscal year 19 budget, that was roughly 108 million dollars. As a general rule, there are three categories of revenue that drive the bulk of our undesignated revenue projections, real estate, taxes, personal property taxes and sales and use Designated revenue makes about 11 percent of the county revenue structure and it's comprised of compensation board revenue, which supports our constitutional officers, and then local user fees that support the departments within the county's budget. To kind of give you an idea of how this has changed over time, I went back and looked at 2008, and back then, we were getting about 80 percent of our revenue that was undesigned, 20 percent was designated. And what we've seen is, is that the designated revenue has been decreasing over the last decade, mostly due to flat revenue sources. And I actually went and pulled our compensation board revenue in fiscal year 2008. In that year, we had 5.8 million dollars that came from the state to support our constitutional officers. Oddly enough, in fiscal year 20, it's exactly 5.8 million dollars. So since 2008, you're looking at 12 years, and we have exactly the same amount of revenue in 2020 as we had in fiscal year 08. Now, so what does that mean? You know, as our state designated revenues remain relatively flat, additional local dollars are needed in order to make our programs work. 2019 is a reassessment year. The county is required to reassess real estate every four years. The county's general reassessment is effective on January 1st of 2019. What's going on right now, the Board of Equalization will be holding hearings. Those will begin on January 24th. And they'll be doing those hearings through the month of February. We're hoping that we will have final reassessment numbers, hopefully before March, but definitely by March. And then on the next two slides, what I'm going to show you is revenue projections based on two things. One is revenue neutral based on the general reassessment, and then one at 89 cents. And what I like to point out is, both of these revenue projections are before the Board of Equalization completes their work. So what will happen is, there will be changes. I don't know how much until we know what the Board of Equalization is going to do, but don't get wedded, so to speak, to these numbers because they will change. All right, so we're going to talk big picture. We're looking at our revenue growth. If we had a revenue neutral rate, which at this point, based on the numbers that we've received, would be 83 cents, if we had a revenue neutral rate of 83 cents, we would be receiving roughly 2.5 million dollars in new revenue for fiscal year 20. And you can see on this slide, there's a breakdown by category. Real estate's 1.2 million, personal property, motor vehicles is 1.8 million, business furniture and fixtures at 100,000, other current property at 100,000. Our delinquent taxes are actually down from our current estimates of about 100,000. Sales taxes up about a half a million, and all of our other undesignated categories are down about 100,000 for a total of 2.5 million. And what this shows is, at 83 cents, that is, what we are allowed to do is retain 1 percent of the allowable value on our revenue neutral rate. So that 1.2 million dollars is the 1 percent of allowable value plus the growth in new Now, if we leave the real estate rate at its current rate, which is 89 cents, we would be estimating 7.7 million dollars in new revenue. Again, you'll see a breakdown by category. Real estate's at 6.1 million, personal property, motor vehicles at 0.8 million, again, business furniture and fixtures at 100,000, other current property is at 400,000, delinquent taxes is, again, in the whole, 100,000, sales taxes is up a half a million, and all of our other undesignated categories are down 100,000. So 7.7 million. Again, you would have the 1 percent allowable value plus real estate growth and at the current rate being 89 cents. Talk a little bit about our revenue patterns. Our current growth patterns are very similar to prior years. Normal growth in the undesignated revenue category is roughly 2 million dollars per year, and you're seeing 2.5 million. Again, you're getting a little bit more because you get that 1 percent allowable value on this reassessment cycle. Real estate values were last assessed in 2015. That was four years ago. The average increase since the last reassessment is 8 percent, which is roughly 2 percent annually. Based on our year-to-date collections through December of 2018, our fiscal year 2019 revenues are tracking very well to the estimates, and any underperforming revenues are being offset by surpluses in other categories. Talk a little bit about the state budget. According to the school staff, the schools are anticipating roughly 3.6 million dollars in new revenue for fiscal year 20. 1.8 million dollars of that is tied to 5 percent salary raises for teachers. On the county side, the only additional state monies that we are seeing are a 2 percent salary increase for locally-supported state employees on July 1st and a 1 percent bonus on December 1st. That totals roughly 173,000 dollars. At that point, I will take any questions.
Do you want to have any questions? Superintendent Tuck?
In regards to the delinquent taxes, have you got the report back from the treasurer of how much has been recovered from the tax sales or that process at this point in time? The last report was about 16,000 dollars, if I remember correctly.
I have not received anything on what they're collecting. I do know that my projection is showing us that we're not going to make the estimate in the current year, which is why I have that coming down by 100,000.
All right. Thank you.
Superintendent Bee?
Okay, like, on the teacher salaries, though, that's only if you, okay, that's based just on certain teachers, right? Like, it's going to be the same situation, it's not going to pay for all teachers.
Yeah, I don't know the particulars of how that money is distributed, but I'm pretty sure that it is linked to SOQ positions.
And so that means that to meet, you know, employees, other monies have to come forward from the locality. If you're going to, or they're going to have to shift the raise some ways if they want to give everyone a raise.
Yeah, I think in the past, the monies that have come from the state, when it's tied to SOQ positions, only fund about 60 percent of the employees, so.
Right, because this came up at the forum that we were at, remember? But then when you look at the county employees, those, okay, those are met, right? Do you know, Craig, those are met? Or does that?
When you say county employees.
Well, like here, where it says state monies for locally-supported state employees, what would that be?
Those are just the constitutional officers. And so basically, that's the additional revenue that the county's going to receive.
Okay, so if we have more than is required by the state, then again, we're going to have to come forward. That's why I wanted to make sure. It always sounds good out there in the public when, you know, the word from Richmond is you're getting this much money, but what people don't understand is, it only covers a certain amount of votes.
And that's the same thing with the constitutional officers?
Yeah, okay, got it.
Because we have more employees than the constitutional officers than the comp board provides for.
Yeah. Okay.
Superintendent Tuck, have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Superintendent Bond?
Can you, going back to slide seven, for the county, for the state monies, for the county, the only additional state monies added for fiscal 2020 are a 2 percent salary increase for locally-supported state employees. What does locally-supported mean?
That would be the constitutional officers and their staff members and the electoral board and the library.
So.
Social services.
Social services.
Social services also.
So, for some constitutional officers, they get a supplement. Am I using the right term?
We receive funding from the compensation board to provide salaries for those employees, but we, because the constitutional officers have elected to be on the county's compensation plan, we provide salaries above what the compensation board requires. Did I say that right?
Not for all constitutional officers, but for most.
That's correct.
So does locally-supported mean that? Or does that just mean all the constitutional compensation board employees?
Yes. When we say locally-supported state employees, those are those employees that are on the county's comp and class plan but are considered compensation board employees for purposes of pay through the state. Right? I keep looking at you guys because it is complicated and when you try to explain.
Yes, there are a certain number of positions in each constitutional officer's budget that are specific compensation board-funded positions. There are additional positions over and above that that the county supplies, dependent upon the office. This only provides money for those positions that are recognized by the state as state compensation board positions within their departments.
Okay.
Carol got it, so she must have something to add.
Well, the term itself is state-supported local employees. Okay, that's what the state calls it. And what that means to the state is, is that they're required to pay a certain amount of funds for the salaries of employees that are technically employed locally. And it, as Mark has gone over, is primarily constitutional offices and social services. So in both cases, Craig mentioned that, is they don't give you very much money, not unlike the schools or anywhere else. The state's not fully funding the salaries of positions nor the benefits. So they're on our pay plan in many cases, social services all the way through a number of employees and constitutional offices. There's a significant increase in county funds that support those salaries. So the term itself is a state term that says, we're the state and we know they're not state employees, but we give money for their salaries. They just need to give a lot more money for their salaries.
So is it typical that, you know, that the county supports those types of raises for the whole offices, even though we're not getting state money to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm going to skip slide three for a second. I want to respect the time. On slides four and five, under other current property, why does it increase from 100,000 to 400,000?
That has to do with public service corporation revenues, and right now, they will not be reassessed until the fall. And so right now, I have what the number is as it sits at 89 cents. And if I rolled the rate back to 83 cents, I only have the value structure that is as it exists.
I see. Okay.
So I won't know what that reassessment is until September, which is well after this budget has been established. So that's why there's a drop there between the 83 and the 89 cents.
I want to congratulate you on, our revenues are tracking the way that you projected. I think that's pretty fantastic. And then lastly, the slide three, Board of Equalization. Can you explain that process?
Actually, I probably defer to Carol. She's more involved in the Board of Equalization process. But just as an overview, essentially, citizens are afforded an opportunity to question their assessment, and then the Board of Equalization would hold hearings as to the validity of their questioning of the assessment that they have, and then they make a decision as to whether or not that question is valid. And so, and then they would adjust it accordingly if they would find a reason to do so.
So we'll know the final numbers in March. Is that what they, that second to last bullet?
That's correct. We should have final numbers by the first week of March.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Superintendent Schip?
No questions.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Good job.
More to come on this subject in the weeks ahead, for sure.
I take a motion to come out of work session here.
Is there?
Second.
Second.
Third.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Y'all want to keep moving? Mr. Keen? At close to the end. All right. New business, the annual appointments to boards and commissions.
Mr. Chair, we have included in your packet a resolution which denotes the appointments that are made annually by the board of supervisors at your first meeting in January for various boards and commissions. If you are aware of a board or commission that's not on this list, that's because those appointments are not annual appointments, they're term appointments or longer-term appointments. So the only ones that are on this list are the ones that run from January to December. I know a couple of people said, what about this committee or that committee? You're appointed, those obviously that are appointed to others that are not on here are for terms beyond January to December, so those don't have to be done over in January each year, it's just the ones on this list. So traditionally, what we've done is, Mr. Chair, just go through each group and see who wants to submit their name, and then at the end, we vote to ratify all the ones that are submitted.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
But if we wanted to adjust a board position that's on a term, that can be done under another resolution, or how does that work? Or does that typically work?
If it's, and I'm going to look to Marty as well, if it's not on this resolution, what we would need is a resignation, a separate resolution with the board member who's currently appointed resigning and the board member that wants to assume that being appointed. So that would be a separate resolution. Yes, ma'am.
So if she has something, she wants to switch, we'll do that next meeting?
Yes, sir. If there's any discussion of any groups that you want to switch, if you'll bring that up tonight, we'll have that prepared for the 28th.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want to read these or you want me to?
I'll be glad to. The first one we have is the AFD Advisory Board.
I'm on it and I'm willing to continue to serve. They tend to meet in. They tend to meet in the evenings when they have. They have not met very frequently. If you remember, the latest one was the Smart Road, I believe there's that. But I'm happy to continue to serve if somebody desperately or would like to be on that. I don't mind stepping aside.
Any discussion?
Yeah, okay.
Nobody's fighting you for that one? Mr. Chair, the second item, the second board commission is the Chamber of Commerce Liaison. That has traditionally been the chair as the primary member and a board member as an alternate. So.
Everybody's fine with that?
Yeah. And they meet on Wednes, is it the third Wednesday, it's at three at the Chamber office. And then I've called Mary a couple of times, I want to say two or three times, that she's filled in for me. But the meetings usually last about an hour.
Everybody good with me serving?
Yep.
Alternate, you want to?
Do you want me to still be the backup?
Yes, you want to.
Okay. Just call me like Chris did.
All right. Next commission is the Montgomery Regional Economic Development Commission. Currently Supervisor Shepard serves as the appointee and Supervisor.
And I'm fine to take it again. I mean, that's fine with me unless somebody wants to. And I'm happy to be backup.
Thank you.
All right. Next commission is the Fairview District Home Board. Currently Supervisor Fidzikowski is the member representative and Supervisor King is the alternate.
Keep that one?
Yeah. I don't mind serving on that one.
Everybody okay with that?
Good.
Chair King, you're the alternate. Do you want to remain the alternate? Carol got up, I thought she was going to make a move for that one.
Ignore the woman standing there.
I thought she was volunteering serving that day. I did too. She got up.
Trying to give board docs backup.
All right. The next is Legislative Liaison. This is the supervisor who relays in information back and forth to the board and to our General Assembly members.
And beat some over the head for money? I'd like to do that.
Is everybody okay with Mary?
Yeah, I'd be afraid you tried to take that one away.
Shouldn't beat pretty rough with them, I've seen. All right. The next one is the Library Board Liaison. Currently Supervisor Bone is the representative and Vice Chair Demots is the alternate.
So Sarah and I have discussed me taking over as the representative on that one. And then possibly also doing a bit of a trade. I've never been active in the libraries and Supervisor Bone has never been active in tourism. And so we're thinking about maybe trading those two. And I was just reappointed to serve on tourism. So it would be something where I would have to resign and then have, then we'd have to reappoint Sarah for that. But if that would be okay with everybody, I would like to serve on the library board.
Tours and listed.
That's one of the appointments that we'll have to. All right. Ms. Bone, do you want to be the alternate for the library?
Sure.
Don't worry. We keep going.
All right. On the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, this is the, the road group is I call it. Currently Supervisor Biggs is the board member, Supervisor Tuck is the alternate. I am on as the county administrator. So Ms. Biggs and Mr. Tuck.
I will say it's hard when Mary can't, because this is in the middle of, it's a two o'clock meeting and during the day, those are almost impossible for me unless court has been continued or the nature of what I do. But I'm happy to be the backup. I just want folks to know it's hard and I'm not always going to be able to be there.
I've got a question, like if, like if Chris couldn't, if Chris couldn't do it, can another board member, but it has to be specifically appointed.
Yes, ma'am, it has to be appointed. Well, another board member can attend, but they can't attend as a voting member.
Right. Okay, go.
Do you still want to be the alternate? I'd be happy to be the alternate if, yeah, I have a little bit of flexibility.
For me, it is almost, my schedule tends to be rigid. You just can't tell a judge, hey, look, I really don't want to, I've got an MPO meeting, I'm sorry. So I just can't move those. So I'm happy to continue trying to serve. If you think that you can be there, you would be a more effective.
Let's try it for this year and see how it works.
Backup.
Supervisor Bone is the alternate.
You know, ahead of time though.
Montgomery County Improvement Council. Currently Vice Chair Demots is the representative and Supervisor Tuck is the alternate. And that one's at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, it says no regular meeting schedule or actually is a regular meeting schedule. Those are Thursdays, I think it's the third Thursday of the month at 10 o'clock.
Yes, ma'am.
I would really like to continue serving on that board. I don't think I've had to call Chris at all for it.
You haven't called me a single time.
Do you want to stay as alternate?
I'm happy to stay as alternate. Again, it's during the day, but it's here in Christiansburg, so that sometimes it's a little more flexible.
Is everybody okay with that?
Parks and Recreation Commission Liaison. Currently Vice Chair Demots is the representative and Supervisor Fidzikowski is the alternate.
I'd also really like to keep that one if for no other reason than to continue giving Mitchell a hard time.
And when she's busy, I give Mitchell a hard time, so it works out, so I'll stay on it.
Is everybody okay with that?
Next is Planning Commission Liaison. That has been Supervisor Tuck has been the Planning Commission Liaison member and Supervisor Fidzikowski has been his alternate.
I don't think I had to call you last year, maybe one, but I'm happy to continue to serve. It's a couple of meetings a month on the busy months and one meeting a month typically on the lighter ones, but I'm happy to continue to serve. But if somebody says, hey, I really want this, I'm happy to give it up.
Are these the meetings in the evening, the regular Planning Commission meetings?
They're the regular Planning Commission meetings. They typically go on for an hour. There are some that go on for two or three hours. I think we have one that went on for about four hours last year, but that was, maybe we had two that went on for four hours.
I'd be interested if you don't want it.
I am happy to do whatever. If this is something that you really want, I'm happy to be the alternate. I'm also happy to serve. It's, I'll leave it up to you.
I'll be the member and you be the alternate. How about that?
Sounds good.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, and that will work out as far as the library board, because I know one time I was trying to help Chris out, but I had to set the library board meeting at the same time I was running back and forth. So, yeah, a long time ago, so yeah.
All right. Next one is Road Viewers Board. I'm not sure why that one's on here every year, because it's really the entire Board of Supervisors or passed due for a ride in the van. We'll start working on that soon. I guess the question would be, is there any board member that doesn't want to be on the Road Viewers Board?
I'm not going to call shotgun. They don't have an option.
So it depends on who's driving the van, right?
Yeah, well, I had mixed reviews last time I drove so well. The next item is the School Liaison. Currently that is Supervisor Bone is the designated representative and then the remaining board members all agree that they would be an alternate if she couldn't attend.
I'm still okay with it.
Everybody good with that? Thank you.
Those two will keep you really busy, the Planning Commission and the school. We're at the same time. It really keeps you going.
Are you sure you want to?
Because I had to do.
Because that, okay. All right. I was just thinking, that gives you some weeks you'll have on Monday, Tuesday. Well, no, they meet on Tuesdays, but they alternate from us. So it shouldn't, there shouldn't be that many Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday weeks that you've got three meetings in one week.
But pretty much every Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm fine. I mean, I might call mercy in the middle of the year, but we'll see.
Yeah. I guess I did that first.
Transportation and Safety Commission is currently Supervisor Fidzikowski.
And I would like to stay on that one. I've kind of started something there, so need to see it finished.
Is everybody okay with that?
I guess.
Keep your hair down.
And last but not least, the Virginia Tech Liaison.
That's traditionally been the county administrator, which is me. It says no scheduled meetings, but one of the things I'll tell you is that Dr. Wilton, who's Vice President of Operations at Tech, who's also their community representative, he and I are on at least three boards together now. So while we don't have formal set meetings, we see each other all the time. So I'm honored to continue that if the board is okay with that.
Do with that?
Mr. Chair, I'll look to the clerk, did I, did I get them all?
You got them all.
I got them all.
So you have those in the form of resolution. I'll be glad to read them back if you'd like, or we could take a motion in a second on what we discussed for approval of all those is noted.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. DeMots?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Senator Demots?
Now for the county attorney's report.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just a quick update on the opiate litigation. As you know, the complaint was filed, or was given, that short complaint, it was like 120 some pages. The defendants have all moved, as was expected, to remove the case to federal court, because you know, we filed here locally in Montgomery County Circuit Court. There's a hearing set this Thursday on the motion to remove, so I'll let you know what happens. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. County administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick things. First off, congratulations to you and to Mr. Demots as chair and vice chair. Look forward to working with you through a busy year, I'm sure. Wanted to mention that I traveled to Richmond last week for the VML VACO conference and Supervisor Biggs was there as well. Got a lot of information on the state budget. I think what you're going to be hearing from the state is they're in a similar position to the county. Revenues look very strong for this coming year, but just as we're going to have as we go through our budget, they have lots of opportunities for those revenues to be used in a lot of places. So I did pick up some information, excuse me, I hope to get that out to you later this week. I had intended to last week, but last week went by in a flash. Also wanted to mention that Emily Gibson, our planning director, Dan Brew, who's our MPO director, and I met with Commonwealth Transportation Board member Ray Smoot today to review road projects and activities in Montgomery County. Dr. Smoot is a recent new appointee to the Commonwealth Transportation Board, so had the opportunity to sit down with him and a GIS map and go through some of the things that we are asking of VDOT this year. And I will say that Ray's very, Dr. Smoot is very well-versed in roads in Montgomery County, and I think he'll be a very good appointee for us on the Commonwealth Transportation Board. As you're aware, we opened two hours late this morning. You know, we take very seriously being here on time to serve the citizens, but with the ice that we had, a little bit of ice is a bigger challenge for our crews than a lot of snow. And so they had, they worked over the weekend and had to work hard this morning to get sidewalks and parking lots safe for employees and citizens. So I appreciate all their hard work and we'll keep an eye on the sky. Looks like we're going to have several more opportunities in the coming weeks to be challenged there. Lastly, just want to mention offices, county offices will be closed this Friday for Lee Jackson Day and Monday for Martin Luther King Day. We observe the state holiday schedule and those two are state holidays, so we'll be away for that and then back next Tuesday. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Biggs.
Well, I also want to congratulate you Chair King and Vice Chair Demots and looking forward to your leadership. And, you know, we never did thank Chair Tuck for his past leadership, so that should be mentioned too. Okay, now, Virginia's first. We have actually two pages of accomplishments, 28 to be exact. And before Danny Wilson took over, you probably wouldn't fill half a page with them. And so I thought it would be great if you could include that. I mean, that's really a tremendous amount of work that's gone on in the last year. And I also wanted to comment on the VML VACO Finance Forum. It sounded like to me that for the short session, there was going to be a lot of pulling as far as how to spend, you know, monies. And I was glad to note that they did bring up community services boards, which I've been telling you guys about, that the state has taken away funding and told the community services boards, you're going to make it up in Medicaid expansion. But the problem is that the expansion comes later and they are running with less money from the state for about three months, I think it is. And so this did come up and at the executive committee today with our community services board, there is still great concern about that. I think we were expected to lose, what, 300,000 this year, 900,000 next year? So we better hope that the Medicaid expansion does come in and help that situation out. But they are aware of it at the state level. And then my last thing, I just wanted to know, Craig, can we get the new supervisor manuals that says we can preorder them now? If there's anyone that would like a new one? I want a new one because they've updated a lot of information, but if you guys want one, I guess just tell Craig.
Yep. Let me or Vicki know. I know we had a discussion in the office the other day. We want to make absolutely sure that is a new version.
It is. Phyllis, yeah. Phyllis had spent a long time working on it with different people.
We'll order a set for everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that all you have?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I could think of some more if you want me to. No, just kidding.
Supervisor Bone.
I also want to congratulate you Chair King and Vice Chair Demots. Looking forward to working with you this year and thank you Supervisor Tuck for doing a great job last year. I also want to send out a warm-hearted appreciation to all our fire rescue, sheriffs, police, and all the services during these tough weather times, let alone over the holidays when sometimes they don't get any breaks. So greatly appreciate them. Also want to thank the finance department. This is a tough time of year, I can imagine, but they run a great, tight ship. And lastly, I want to thank our treasurer, Richard Shelton, for doing a great job for all the years that he's been our constitutional officer. And that's it.
Supervisor Baskowski.
I only really have one thing to report. We are going to try and experiment down at Eastmont High School, Eastern Montgomery, with an open gym starting this Sunday. Mitch worked really, really hard on this program to get this up. And it's kind of an experiment. We don't know how it's going to go, but we're hoping that it'll give the kids in the area, which there is no, really, there is no public facility down in Eastern Montgomery for kids to get out of the cold weather and exercise and have a little fun. So we're hoping this works out and possibly expanding it if that's something that folks are interested in. But kicks off Sunday, so.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepard.
I just want to say congratulations to you and that's all I have. No report.
Thank you. Supervisor Tuck.
Congratulations, and I appreciate both of you willing to give up so much time.
Congratulations, and I appreciate both of you willing to give up so much time. I was, I spoke at the chamber and I talked about 43 meetings, but for the chair, it's actually about 54 meetings that you just agreed. And so, I greatly appreciate the time and the sacrifice that both of you are willing to give up. And I look forward to both of your leaderships and working with you. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Vice Chair DeMots.
Just very quickly, thank you all for your kind words and for supporting me. For being vice chair, I look forward to working with you Chair King this year. I think we'll have a, we'll have a great productive year. Also, wanted to mention upcoming end of this month, several of us are going to VACO's Lobby Day. That is followed by a chairperson's institute. And I'm looking to you, Craig, vice chairs are also eligible to attend. So, I would be interested in going to that just as a training exercise, a knowledge-based exercise. And then, I also wanted to congratulate the Mount Taber Ruotan Club. This past weekend, we had a biscuit and gravy breakfast and it was our most well-attended one so far. Those have been a really successful endeavor for our club. I get to serve eggs. So, I get coleslaw, the fish fries and eggs with the biscuit breakfast. But they have been very successful. And the Mount Taber community has really come out in full force to support that event. So, it's really nice to see, everybody seems to know everybody at those events. And it's very nice to be a part of the community in that way. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Just have a couple of things. I appreciate the kind words from each of you. And I hope at the end of this year, you still got kind words for me. Bless your heart. One thing, the, our new radios that we voted on for fire rescue, they should be up and running by 12:00 tomorrow. They wanted to do it today with that weather. They said be tomorrow. So, they're going to try and get that up and running. And that's all I have. With no other business, meet in June.
Wow, you like doing that, don't you?